This problem will never be easier to solve than it was yesterday. And the second best day to solve it is, you know, today. You haven't really asked me about transportation.
Oh, well, we should talk about transportation.
Or bedrooms are for people.
I love talking about bedrooms. I could talk about bedrooms are for people all, all day. Hello Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip Ogrin and for episode 13, I sat down with Lauren Folkerts in South Boulder to talk about her candidacy for Boulder City Council. Lauren is passionate about city council and jokes that it is like a spectator sport for her because she enjoys watching the meetings online and follows them on Twitter. Lauren showed me her garden and I enjoyed a handful of raspberries as we walked through her neighborhood to a nearby park where we sat and talked about a wide variety of issues, including housing, building codes, transportation, social services, and bedrooms are for people, among others. A favorite moment of the evening for me was after the interview when we geeked out over her Van Moof e-bike, which is wicked cool. I appreciate Lauren's thoughtful and inclusive approach to problem solving and I admire her depth of knowledge on a wide variety of topics that we discussed. We hope you enjoy this episode with Lauren Folkerts. Lauren, welcome to Sharing Boulder. Thank you so much for coming on the show. I really appreciate it. Maybe just give a brief introduction.
Thanks so much for having me. So my name is Lauren Folkerts. I'm an architect in Boulder and I am running for city council.
Hurrah! Yes, thank you for running. I mean, seriously, thank you for running. Like, I understand that it's not going to be easy and you know, you're going to have a lot of demands on your time. So that's a huge commitment to public service. I really appreciate it. So how is the campaign going?
The campaign is, is going. So this is definitely the first time I have done something like this. And, and it's a lot.
So you have a website up and you're, you're accepting donations or did you max out yet?
I have not maxed out yet. I am still accepting donations. I have hit my city match. I just picked up my city match check on, earlier today, this morning, which was pretty exciting. City cuts you a pretty good size.
And do you have, do you have yard signs and stickers and stuff?
I get my yard signs on Wednesday.
Okay.
I am having a party tomorrow.
Right. That sounds really fun. I'm excited about maybe escaping the orbit of my house tomorrow to come to join you. So maybe just tell me a little bit about what you've learned about running for public office so far.
It really takes a village. I sort of didn't expect how much I would need to ask of other people to help me do this. It's not, not just fundraising, but in terms of, you know, all the mechanics of putting together a campaign of, you know, there's a million marketing pieces and I am not a social media expert despite my age.
Well, it seems like there's like a hundred ways to derail a campaign, right? Like you could, you could just put your foot in your mouth at any opportunity or, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think in a small town, I don't know, people feel about, I think of Boulder as a small town in the most loving way. I think there's a lot more forgiveness for those kinds of things because there is a realization that we're all human, right? Like very few people run for city council in Boulder who are like doing it as a career move.
A paid professional career politician kind of person. Yeah, I think that's right.
They would go for something that pays a little more.
Well, good. I hope, I hope people are, are kind and generous with you as, as you go through the, the heart of this, the upcoming weeks and months. So can you tell us a bit about your work and what you do?
So I've done a lot of different things in Boulder. I've worked for three different architecture firms in my 10 years here. Right now I work for a firm that sort of specializes in modern design. And so we do a lot of homes around Boulder for the most part. That's kind of our bread and butter. And it's great, you know, we get to spend a lot. I love it because we get to spend a lot of time on design. Hi Hazel.
Hazel, come say hi. Yes. Let's watch the, the story.
I think your mom wants you back.
All right, Hazel. Hazel, I wish you could stay, but, but we're busy. All right, where, where are we? You get, you, you get to work with families all over Boulder, helping them improve their homes, I assume.
Yeah. And you know, one of the things I love about working at HMH is that we get to spend a lot of time doing really high quality design and focusing on, you know, the really creative fun parts of architecture.
So you said earlier that it's mostly single family homes. I, I hope, I assume maybe you would, you would like also to do multifamily projects, but is there much opportunity for that sort of thing?
So typically firms focus on sort of a specific thing. I mean, a lot of firms do a lot of different things, but everyone kind of has like their specialty. I don't know that HMH's specialty is ever going to be multifamily homes, but I, I have worked for firms before. I used to work for Catus Architects and I've done, with them, I did a fairly big project with Boulder Housing Partners.
So one of the things we briefly talked about, talking about is just sustainability and architecture and, and, and design for, you know, to make, to make cities more beautiful. So maybe, do you want to give us a positive vision of like how we could build better houses in Boulder or, or maybe improve the, the codes in, in meaningful ways?
So I think that Boulder is doing a good job, mostly in terms of our code where the, our energy code is one of the most restrictive in the country. But we are missing some, some key things. So right now, partially because the value of property is so high and people are trying to max out how much they can build within it and hit these really high energy targets, it pushes a lot of people towards sort of the foam, plastic installations and things like that. And that's pretty damaging in terms of the embodied energy. And when you look at the timeline on our climate and, you know, trying not to, trying to avoid the worst of climate change, when you're using products like that, you're releasing all of that global warming potential right away, right when the building is built, you know, that's all sort of baked in. And so yes, over a hundred year time period, that building is more efficient, but do we really have the capacity right now to be releasing all of that global warming potential in this moment? And I think that that's something we really need to look at and figure out better practices around and ways to restrict.
So just like changing, changing codes around which materials you use, for example?
I think there's a number of things like that. So the way we heat our houses, the whole sort of natural gas, electricity question, we're, we're making progress on that. The city is pushing more towards just electrifying. And one of the benefits of that is that as our grid improves, everyone's homes naturally improve at the same time. And so kind of keeping in mind the, the long range implications of these choices that we're making is really important.
Interesting. Well, one of the things that comes, that brings to mind for me is, okay, so we're, we're sitting here at, at the juncture of Greenbrier and Lehigh. I can't think of the name of this park if it has a name.
I think it's just Shanahan Ridge Park.
Shanahan Ridge Park. And I actually used to live over here in, in one of these units. And it had electric floorboard heating and very poor insulation. I always felt bad like I was just like burning coal to, to, to heat this house that wasn't insulated very well. I know that the, our grid now is mostly, it's all natural gas, I think, electricity generated. I suppose there's solar power coming in from, from south? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, our grid is very large and complicated and takes energy from a lot of different places. But yes, we did close our, or phase out our local coal plant. So...
But why is it that someone can rent a house over here without really insulating? I mean, it used to be one of these situations where the frost would collect on the, on the window and you know, you're running these electric floorboards and the, the expense for the electricity was incredible.
How can the city let that happen? I mean, we do have an energy requirement now for rental units. So you do have to meet sort of a minimum code that you might not have had to then.
So this was maybe six, eight years ago. So, well, I know you're not running for city council to, to change the, the building codes necessarily.
I mean, a little bit, but...
So, so tell us maybe, give us a, a elevator pitch of why you're running for city council.
So the, there's two main issues that, for me, first is our affordable housing crisis and the second is our climate crisis. I think the last, you know, COVID and the last year have really, and a lot of the research have come out, makes it obvious that there's just so much overlap in those things. There's a lot of other issues that our community is facing, but largely they tie back to affordable housing in my mind. So that really is the foundation of what I'm pushing for and why I'm running for council.
Cool. So yeah, give us a vision of your, of what you would like to see happen with affordable housing.
So for me, I think being an architect, I understand the complexities and difficulties of the, sort of the challenge that we're up against. So there is no one silver bullet. We're going to have to do a number of different things in order to make a big enough dent to really see an impact. I think sort of on the large scale, the big apartment style buildings, you know, I think while our 25% inclusionary housing requirements for new construction are great, I'd also like to see us try and go harder for some of the federal dollars that are available. Right now, our permitting processes, especially if you have to go through a discretionary review are so lengthy that we, it really takes us out of the running for some of the like Lytech funding and things that could help create incentives for developers to do housing that has a really high level of affordability.
Yeah, it always seems to me like whenever a, a housing project gets through the system, it's like such a big victory for, for all the hours and all the effort of the people who, who pushed it through that it's like, I mean, does it really have to be such a big ordeal every time we, we build new housing? I mean, it makes sense to, to me to vet it all and make sure it's a, it's a sensible project for the property that's under proposal. But to me, it just always seems like, wow, like why does it really have to be quite so difficult?
So one of the things I'd like to advocate for is that we take sort of a bigger picture of the whole city. So some communities, I think New Jersey was one of the first, I think the whole state did this, where they sort of look at the gap between the housing that you have and what it would take to sort of meet whatever goal you have. So in our case, it would probably be trying to house the majority of our workforce. So if we look at what our housing stock is now and what kind of needs we would need to fulfill to make it so that workers could work with reasonably and live within our community. There are economists who can make a model of that and can give us numbers on what exactly that should look like. And we could divvy it up around town and say like, okay, we're going to try and make this many units at the, you know, of these types of units at these types of price points in each portion of town. And then, you know, have community meetings to figure out like, what do you want it to look like? You know, here's what, you know, you know your neighborhood really well. Do you want to see an apartment building? Do you want to do duplexes and triplexes? Like what, what makes sense for this part of town?
I really appreciate you, you know, sort of saying that out loud as a candidate because I know that in the past, it's always been kind of like vague, vague understandings that we want a bit, a bit more housing or whatever. But, but what you said is actually pretty radical, right? Like, because, because if you start attaching numbers to that, the first thing that comes into my brain is like the 60,000 in commuters who, who come in every day for daily work. So you're talking about that kind of magnitude of new housing?
I mean, I think it's, so, you know, first we need to start with exactly what is the goal. As the, as a community, we should have a target of who it is that we are really trying to house. And then we aggressively go after that target. Because I think that you can get a lot more buy-in from the community when they realize that, you know, when you have a well-communicated outcome that you're working towards. It's not just like, oh, we're going to put a random amount of this in your neighborhood because we feel like it or because you are the people who are least able to keep it out, you know? So I think having intention and agreement that this is a community goal that we want to work towards and then really equally sharing both the opportunity and the burden of what that is.
Yeah, or perceived burden in a lot of cases. I mean, yeah, people, obviously this conversation is really going to raise the hackles of, of what we might call a nimby. Nicole scolded me a little bit for using that phrase, but it feels, it feels apt in this moment. You know, people who don't want their, their neighborhoods to be denser. So like, how do you, how do you get around that kind of reflexive rejection of more housing?
I mean, again, I, I sort of believe in people. I think that we all, like every single one of the candidates right now is talking about how much we need affordable housing. I don't think that there's any, any denial that this is a huge issue that our community faces. And I think that we can tie that to, you know, like we, people want their children to be able to live in this community. People, you know, we need to have, in order to attract the best teachers for our schools, we need to have housing for them. I think that, you know, it's important that we communicate why we want this and what makes sense. But, and, and also to give people choice in the solution. Like it, if you don't, like, like I say, when we sort of present like, here's what it would take to tackle the problem, we do make that a community discussion. So it's not like, oh, the, you know, city council has decided you're going to get a quadplex next to your single family home. No, I mean, I think we're looking at what makes sense for your community and how, you know, because there are going to be places nearby that are on transportation hubs that density feels better. And there's going to be places where it really makes sense to keep, to have less density that, because it's not as bikeable, it's not as walkable. And, and that'll...
Further away from the city core, for example.
That'll change over time. But making sort of a long-term plan so that we're not looking at each time we build a building, asking all of these questions. Like we don't need to relitigate this every time. We should sort of have a long-range plan that we largely agree upon.
Yeah. So that, I was going to circle back on that because the way you framed this increase in housing actually feels like, like a lot of individual decisions that take a lot of time. Whereas if, if we just made zoning changes, and maybe that's, maybe that's where you're heading with this, if we made zoning changes, then people can by right just build out to whatever the zoning code allows for. And then, and then it's not really so, you know, like we got to get all the neighbors together to agree that it's okay for me to have a duplex. So are you, really what you're proposing is zoning changes or something more? I guess the zoning has to, has to be flexible and has to change if you're going to accommodate the kind of housing you're talking about.
Right. I mean, I think that we can't, you know, 80% of our residential land areas, single family zoning. We can't avoid touching all of it and meet the goals that we've sort of agreed to as a community that we want to tackle. I can think of a lot of different ways that we can go about solving this, but I do, the important part is that we need to get community buy-in in order to move forward with these projects. And it would be better if we could get community buy-in, not in a just one-off kind of way. We need to make a, a plan for the future that we can continue to move forward with, that will allow for smoother progress in the future.
Well, one of the things that, that sort of irritates me about that answer is like, I, I don't want to do this in the future. Like I want to, when I, when the city council convenes in January, I kind of want you guys to hit the ground running and start, and start, you know, for one thing, getting out of the way of the city manager and the, and our Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan values and, and start letting some of this stuff move forward. And, and like, I want to start like, you know, acting like the climate crisis is upon us, you know, not like vague ideas for the future. And I'm not saying like, what you're saying is vague, but, but in, in the answer you gave, it's a bit hand wavy. So...
Yeah. There are no silver bullets. We got to do it all. So I mean, I think that one of the concrete things that coming, that's coming up is that there is a zoning update that will probably happen right at the beginning of the, when the next council is seated. So yeah, absolutely. We need to look at making reasonable adjustments to try and be more in line with our comp plan values. And especially, because I would like to see us tie some of that increase in density or option for increase to affordability, to, you know, long-term affordability, whether that's land trusts or deed restrictions. But the idea that you could potentially get a little bit more density if you sign, you know, if you permanently restrict things, I think is really one of, something we have to do if we're really trying to fix this problem for the future.
From the climate perspective, it really makes sense to, you know, make it much more attractive and much more, really more, the, the more convenient choice to have car light living in, in a lot of the places throughout the city and a lot of density for the sake of having more people that can live without cars. One of the things that, that sort of horrifies me about the, the prospect of more housing is just more cars. And so if, if as we go, we're always, we're always thinking about the fact that, that one of the reasons we're doing this is, is to help mitigate our climate carbon impact. And so I would just like to see as our, as our population increases, our, the number of cars that we have go down. And I don't know, maybe that's a way to really sell housing to people who don't want it in their communities. If, if we can somehow say like, there'll be less, there could actually be less traffic, more foot traffic, more cycling traffic, less car traffic, less parking perhaps.
Well, and I think that's, you know, the reason that you want to focus the density on transit hubs and things like that is for the environmental impact, but it's also the livability. Like from an urban design standpoint, you can make those places really vibrant and wonderful and it makes a lot of sense. And so you get this wonderful overlap between making the air, making it more, everyone's lifestyle more sustainable, but also making it more enjoyable. I mean, I strongly believe that, I mean, I live, I live in an area that's slightly dense for a reason. Not super dense, but you know, that I think there's a lot of value to living in a community where you have sort of that tight neighborhood connection and where you share things like the community garden and the swimming pool and the shared resources gives you more than you would have otherwise. So...
Well, it's worth pointing out that in the walk from your unit to this park, we stopped and talked with three different neighbors and petted several dogs. And we got interrupted by a dog here earlier. And I mean, people are great, you know, we love people. We want to, we want to live in, in communities where we look after each other and say hi to each other, greet each other. One of the things I love about this particular community is it's like you're really aware of how special the open space is. Because just, just looking over there, we can see all the way past El Dorado Springs to the, to the, I guess that's, that's, I'm not sure what that ridge is, but it, I mean, I think if you were on the top of that ridge, you'd be able to see Rocky Flats from there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, yeah.
Yeah, I feel really lucky. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't move if I had the option to. I, between having the open space and then having the skip that comes around, it's like the perfect amount of access to urban and access to open space. And I think that's really, you know, Boulder has set aside all of this open space. And that's like part of the benefit is that you get to have this vibrant community with all this amenity space. And so we're, we're set up perfectly to like, make these really, really wonderfully rich communities.
Yeah, I love, I love the skip here and I wish that my neighborhood had something equivalent coming through it. But my neighborhood's so, right, you know, the, where I live right now, it's, I'm kind of in between baseline and table mesa. And so I have to walk a half a mile either way to get to a, a regular route. But, so I miss, I miss having that ability to just hop on the bus, go down to Southern Sun or someplace here at the corner and take it back up. Or go downtown. The skip is very nice for, for trips downtown. And of course, that will all improve as we get denser, you know, and have, and accommodate more people. Because just the way the economics of transit, you know, you have to have, you have to have people that, that want to ride and that, you know, enough density to support it.
And I think it's important to bring up that, you know, even if we didn't do this, the community doesn't stay the same. We're actually, we're changing all the time regardless. Cities are never static. So, you know, in the last three years, we've been seeing population decline. My office, which is right across the street from Boulder High, has become a significantly less walkable place. We lost a grocery store, a pharmacy. I mean, it, we aren't really able to support right now some, the ability to have the things that make our communities really walkable. And I think that when we look at adding a little bit of density in places, it's important to do that in a way that encourages those 15-minute neighborhoods and that really, you know, uplifts the lives of everyone.
Well, I have a question about, about that. When you, when you walk around this neighborhood, do you have, do you have any imagination about how you might change it in terms of the housing here or, or any kind of multi-use, like a, like a corner store or anything like that? I mean, I guess it doesn't, it doesn't quite seem like there'd be enough critical mass to support that, but...
No, but I mean, we do have the skip and the trails. I always think of, there's, there's a house by one of the trailheads that is a little bit in disrepair. One of my friends brought this up one day as like, wouldn't that be great if that got remodeled and turned into a cafe? And, you know, right at the beginning of the trailhead, that would be such a wonderful thing for this community. So small tweaks, I would love to see just, you know, the Alpine Modern Cafe is so nice down, sort of by the university. People used to do these things all the time. And so that's, you know, everything old is new again, right? Like a lot of what I want to advocate for is just using these smart ideas that we've... used as cities in the past to make our communities really wonderful and figure out how we can implement those sort of in our modern communities to bring back some of that fabric.
How do you feel about the housing at Boulder Junction? Does that inspire you, or is it kind of depress you, or is it neither here nor there?
I mean, we were talking about this earlier. I think that a lot of the Boulder processes are really good at getting rid of the solutions that we most want to avoid, and they also kind of squish the, you know, most exciting forward-thinking kinds of things that people are doing in architecture.
Pushes those out.
It pushes those out. You get, you end up sort of with the middle. And so, in general, there's, a lot of the building that we're doing in Boulder is not all that inspiring, but I think that it can still be very important. Sometimes people get too caught up on, you know, tweaking, which is funny, I'm on the Design Advisory Board, right? But like, for real, we need to pay, make sure that we're always paying attention to what the building is used for. Like, that's always the most important thing, is like, who does this serve? Is it good for our community? Is it creating, is it filling a need that we have? And then beyond that, let's make it look good.
Thank you for serving on the, what did you call it?
The Design Advisory Board.
The Design Advisory Board. I appreciate your, your service, but what do you do? I guess, I guess I don't appreciate it, because I don't know what you do, but I'd like to.
So, the Design Advisory Board, we, it's funny, because we never typically see projects under our purview. It was originally created to look at projects in the downtown area with exterior improvements over $25,000. But we don't end up seeing any projects that Landmark Board, that the Landmarks Board sees. So, that limits the amount of, a significant amount of downtown. So typically, we only review projects that are brought by city staff, planning board, or city council. And so when they are reviewing a project and think that it could use a little extra help, they often send it our way.
So, I'm kind of curious about, like, the moment you decided to run for city council? Like, what, what is the, what was like a tipping point for you in terms of thinking about actually tackling this?
So, I always watch city council elections pretty closely. It has a big, you know, impact on what kinds of changes we're going to make in terms of building and zoning and things like that. So, I always, I often joke that it's my football.
You go to city council meetings frequently, or occasionally?
Yeah, and I watch them a lot online. And of course, if I can't watch them, I read the tweets. So, yeah, I, I've always been interested, and then serving on a city board, you know, I was paying attention to who might run this time, and it felt like there was, it was a little short. They didn't have a ton of candidates who are interested, and I wasn't really planning on running, but after talking to a couple people, it sort of seemed like...
Possible, like, or reasonable.
Well, and I, and I'm always looking for candidates who are strong sort of on the urban design side and on social issues, because that doesn't always, there's not always a lot of overlap there. Luckily, I think this time, we have a lot of candidates that are that way. But, and so it was like, we don't have a full slate, we need some more people, you know, that, like, who, who all is going to run this year? And so I volunteered.
That's great, very cool.
It is, it takes a lot to run, and a lot of, you know, in a lot of ways, it is a sign of privilege, you know, it is, and that's really unfortunate. I think that I am able to run, and that's part of why I chose to.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I'd be, so I assume one of the things that you're interested in looking at is fair pay for city council?
Not for me, but...
For sure, but just changing that...
To make sure that other people are able to run. I mean, I think that you, you know, we had 10 candidates at the forum, and you'll notice that we don't have a lot of minority candidates running. We don't have, you know, we're largely all homeowners. There's, we're not matching the demographics of our town, and I think that that is problematic and is something that we should address.
Yeah, I mean, just thinking about it, you know, like, the possibility of running, it's like, you either have to be a complete workaholic to maintain a full-time job and do city council, which some estimates I've heard is up to 30 hours a week, or you have to have a way to just be able to dedicate, you know, like, the sort, you must be kind of like a person of leisure, you know, that can just dedicate that kind of time, so...
Or a balance of both. I'm kind of going for the, like, not working full-time, but...
Well, that's great, if you can...
Also, trying to do enough to make it all happen without losing my mind.
Totally, totally. Well, I, good luck with all the balancing of that. Are you a fast reader?
No, not particularly.
Because Aaron Brockett told me that, you know, it's like, the packets, the weekly packets are like 500 pages. I hope there's a lot of graphics in those packets, like, you know, get a pie chart, next page, you know? Cool. Well, I, do you want to talk about, maybe we should just touch on the demographics of Boulder and touch on, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion? What are, I guess, obviously, our biggest challenge there is housing and allowing people to, to live where they work, but what else is on that list?
There are a lot of people working on diversity and equity issues in our community, and I think that, you know, as a city council member, it would be really important to reach out and make sure that we're supporting the work that's happening in our community. I mean, if we, if we can't have a representational council, we need to at least make sure that we're, because there are people of color in our community that are doing really great things and have leadership roles that, and doing the community outreach already. And so it's important for us to make sure that we are helping lift up those leaders that already exist in our community.
Awesome. How are you feeling about policing and social services and, and those kinds of things?
So, I went to school in Oregon, in Eugene, where the CAHoots program was started.
I don't know about the CAHoots program.
So, the CAHoots program is like an emergency mental health outreach program. So basically, when you call 911 there, you know, you can have the police respond, the fire department respond, an ambulance, but you can also get these mental health and service providers, sort of, that are doing emergency response. And so, part of why that's happened, was happening in Eugene, is that they had a lot of, it's a budget issue, you know? Police are really expensive, but also...
So is jail.
So is jail. They don't provide the best outcomes, jail either. And so, I'm a strong believer in the fact that we need to really address the problems in our community, not just police them into not existing. I think that provide, which doesn't work, right? Yes. We've been working, we've been trying that, it's not very successful, and it is both better for our community and more affordable for us to do the right thing. And whenever you have those opportunities where, like, you get those brake overlaps, you just have to go that direction. Like, there's no other, there's no other reasonable response. So I think that I would really love to see us institute a program like CAHoots. Denver just started the STAR program, which is based off of that, so...
I interviewed Jane Livovich a couple weeks ago, and she said that you can always call the not, the police for a non-emergency and do a wellness check or like a health check. But after we were talking, after we, after we were done with the interview, she kind of, she kind of backtracked on that a bit, because she was like, you know, you can do that, but the standard for admittance to like, to, for an overnight psychiatric care of some sort is just so high that really, like, there's not much point in calling for almost anyone you would see that's still, like, able to walk and interact with you, you know? So, that, that kind of, that was kind of discouraging, because like, I just don't know how to help people, like, as a, as a normal citizen. But I wish I lived in a community where, like, collectively, we knew how to help, you know, like, I could, I could initiate a phone call and it would activate the right kind of services to help a person in need in this moment, rather than like, I just feel like, you know, there's something, there's something that sort of feels sick inside of me, where I have to just sort of ignore someone who's stressed out, or I have to like, like, completely like rearrange my day or my week, or like, I don't even know, like, if I just decided I was going to help somebody that needed help, what would I do?
Or you just might not have the skills to really provide anything meaningful. I mean, like, I'm not a mental health professional, I, there's only so much that I can provide when someone is in crisis. Yeah, no, I think we do have a program where the police are providing some of those services, but again, I think that's not quite the right answer, because you're still asking the police department to do something that is really not within the scope of what they're trained for. I mean, yes, they're bringing in some outside people to help them do it better, but they're, they're making the situation more risky potentially, in some ways by being there, because there, there is a tendency, I think, for situations to escalate in the presence of police, certain kinds of situations. And so, that's part of why having a separate response team is really important. Not only are they better trained, but they, you know, they can de-escalate those situations. And CAHoots talks a lot about how they, while they will call in police if it's necessary, they really reduce the number of incidents that the police get called in for. And I think that that, you know, police officers are really expensive, and, and we're having a hard time hiring them in our community right now. And part of that is because of what we're asking them to do for their jobs, in my opinion. That's just a guess, but I think that, you know, police officers probably don't want to be mental health service providers.
Well, I guess, I, yeah, I don't know anything about that, in terms of like, specifically why Boulder's having difficulty hiring people, but I would guess that other communities are probably also having similar issues with, with hiring and retaining top-notch police staff, because I wouldn't think that Golden, for example, would be like, a lot different in terms of what they're asking their police force to, to do. But, or is there, are there differences between cities?
So, homelessness tracks really closely to the rate of increases in home prices. So I think that you will see that communities like ours, where home prices are increasing really fast, that we have a larger homeless population, and while mental health services and homelessness aren't always, you know, there's, people are homeless for a variety of different reasons, largely housing costs.
Lack of housing being one, yeah.
Being the main one. Being unhoused can exacerbate a lot of other issues. And so I think that we probably are seeing more of that in our community than some neighboring communities, largely because of our house, housing costs. Housing is the answer to everything.
Housing is really a focal point for so, so many things, like, like, I, for, you know, like, like, this thought exercise I often like to do is, is like, what kind of housing would we have to build to, to get, to set, you know, to help, to solve that, the homeless crisis in Boulder County? And in Boulder, the city of Boulder in particular? And I just, you know, like, I think, I think people have this mindset of like, well, I don't want a bunch of homeless people living next to me. And I, my, my kind of glib response is, well, they wouldn't be homeless. It's like, it's like, if we built housing for people to live in, you know...
Then they're housed.
They're housed. And, and you just think about all, you know, just psychologically, how much weight that comes off of, I mean, I know it's not like an instant fix, there's all kinds of reasons why people struggle with mental health. But gosh, I mean, like, if you could house, if you could start by housing them, that feels like a huge, a huge thing to, to do as a society, and like, we ought, like, as, as a self-respecting community and, and people, you know, like, people who want to exude love and, and care for the planet, and it seems like it's such a basic thing that we ought to do.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, you know, the, I largely agree with our Housing First policy. I think that, you know, the idea that we should be putting the bulk of our resources into trying to house people is a really strong idea. I do think that our community has decided that that is not an acceptable solution that we have to do, because clearly, we're not housing everybody right now. And so what do you do in that stopgap situation to kind of try and do as much as you can for as many people as possible? And so I think that, while I'd love to see us just house everyone, in the meantime, I think that we need to look at sort of what alternative options are available. Right now, you know, our shelter is fairly restrictive, and we've recently eliminated the six-month residency requirement, so I suspect that this winter we'll see that probably at capacity.
Most of the time.
A lot of the time. So I think that we probably need to be looking at additional sheltering options, and, and I think that's an opportunity, because the, our existing shelter doesn't make sense for all people, you know? I think that looking at different at-risk populations within the community of people who are currently unhoused is a really important thing, so that we can, you know, address their unique situations to help adequately support them in finding housing and living their lives.
One of the things that came up in the conversation with Dan Williams was just that, you know, if you could live in a carlight neighborhood, and a lot of people do, I want, I want to live in a place where I don't need a car. There's a lot of expense associated with that car ownership that is eliminated. And I feel like a lot of people that are currently unhoused, you know, I don't know, may, a lot of us want to drive around and, and need to drive around, and I don't mean to, to, to say what different people want or need, you know? But I would think that there would be, part of the homeless demographic, if they could just live downtown in a, in a place that didn't require a car, that would be such a big improvement over living without a car or an apartment downtown, you know? And, yeah, that's it.
It's not a question.
Yeah, where do you go with that? It's not a question. Do you, do you have a car? Do you drive?
I do have a car. I don't like driving, so I avoid it if I can, which works pretty well. I love, you know, another thing I love about my office is its location downtown, because I can, once I bike to the office, everything is really within bikeable range for me.
Including City Hall, which will be convenient for your evening job.
Yes. I mean, that's where the Design Advisory Board... Yes, I mean, that's where the design advisory board meets already, so.
Cool. Well, so, I never really asked you about transportation. We touched on it earlier. But you want to tell us about what you're, what you're excited about changing in the city of Boulder with related to, to transportation?
I mean, the key to transportation is housing. But beyond that, I, you know, we are living in a time of changing technology. And so I'm really excited to see us start to look at vehicles differently, more sharing. And also, the e-bikes and electric buses. I think that there's just so many good things happening. And I think it's important that, as a community, we're really looking at what the future might be and trying to prepare the best way we can for that. So, I think that, you know, are we going to see a need to, or the opportunity to change some of these parking lots that we have required into something else in the future? I hope so. Because we will have shared cars and we, you know, we will just need less of that resource. So I think starting to look at how we're doing development proposals to put us in the best situation so that we can be ready for that change and encourage that change.
Well, yeah, and I, as someone who used to live up here without a car, we, we actually had this month-long experiment with, with my wife and I with our kids. Didn't, we didn't have a car up here. We used the skip. And having an e-bike to get up the hill, this last hill.
Life-changing.
It is life-changing. You really don't need a car, even, even though we're like, you know, four miles from downtown, something like that? Are we more like five miles?
Yeah, I think it's about five.
But between the bus and the e-bikes and, you know, the car, there's a car share down in the corner at the, at Table Mesa. It's not super convenient. But we actually, we actually used it quite a lot. So, when, when we needed it, we would either bike down to go grab it, or we'd take the skip down and then drive back up. It was a little rigmarole, but car shares are, are great. Like, I like driving other people's cars that are like, I don't, I don't have to maintain.
I like not maintaining that car.
Exactly.
No, I mean, I've never, I'm, I have the car share thing too. I have never used the one at the grocery store here. But I use the one at my office. It makes it so I can bike to work. And if I have a meeting that pops up where I have to go to Denver or something, I, you know, they have a bunch of rental, there, there's a number of cars you can check out in that area.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, I've used some of those too.
And so that makes it so that I don't have to worry about biking to work, which is really nice.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, that's great. I, and I, man, I, every time I can get someone to try an e-bike for the first time, I really like try to cajole them into doing that because.
I have the most architect-y e-bike. And so people always see it and they're like, oh, what is that? And I just, I always try and talk people into taking.
What does that mean? What's an architect-y e-bike?
I'll have to show it to you, but it doesn't look like an e-bike. Like, all the battery, the motor, it's all hidden. And, and it's all black and all the wires and stuff are all running internally in the frame. There's like no controls. It's very sleek.
That's very cool. Yeah, I just love, you know, putting somebody on an e-bike. And so often, they have this verbal reaction, like, oh, you know, like, they like literally have a little shout for joy. And, man, I, I just feel like, you know, I, I understand the appeal of a Tesla. It's a nice-looking car. But I really like to get a high-end electric assist bike. It's way cheaper than a Tesla and it's so much more thrilling.
Even, mine is not a high-end bike, but it is, oh, I just keep hitting my mic. It's so much fun.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm not saying you have to have, I mean, I had an entry-level one for a very long time. It was, it was really, I put a ton of miles on it and it was still thrilling. So, yeah, I'm all for e-bikes. Another favorite subject of mine is bedrooms are for people. Do you endorse, did you sign the petition? Do you endorse bedrooms are for people?
I signed the petition the first time around. I actually missed it the second time around. But I do support bedrooms are for people and I'm happy that it's going to be on the ballot. I, you know, I know that a lot of people are sort of talking about the unintended consequences right now. And I think that, you know, it's really important to recognize that there are a lot of unintended consequences to these occupancy limits. I mean.
Or intended.
Yeah, or intended. Again, I went to school in Eugene, Oregon, where there are no occupancy limits. It's a college town, very similar in size, with a similarly sized university. And I lived in a house with eight architects.
Happy memories, I'm sure.
It was wonderful. And we were good neighbors.
You were good neighbors to the people next to you, you mean? Yeah, yeah, not to each other. I meant, yeah, right. Yeah, that's what they say, right? Like, if you're living illegal, you're not a great neighbor because you're trying to stay under the radar, avoid eye contact, you know?
Whenever you have rules like that, that are going to be unequally enforced, you know, that is always an equity issue. Who is going to get, who is going to bear the brunt of those types of regulations? And who needs the protection? I think is, even if you don't believe in the economic side of it, which I, I think you should, just for those sort of issues of making our community more, more welcoming and equal.
Well, one thing I've been thinking about lately is, is like, there's like, kind of this relentless economic argument right now against bedrooms are for people. And I, two of my responses are like, I haven't heard a cogent argument that says, well, it's, it's also bad for the climate and it's also bad from a social justice perspective. I guess, I guess the economic does bleed into the social justice angle, but.
But you look at who, you know, who are the organizations that are supporting this? And I think you could say that like, if those are the nonprofits that are supporting bedrooms are for people.
But, but one thing, one, one response that I have that feels kind of glib is that, well, you know, bedrooms are for people may pass and housing prices may go up even still. And in fact, all indications are, we're, we're just like, we are just on a trajectory where the disparity between demand and, and supply just keeps growing. And I, you know, so like, but, but you, you can't, it's really hard to argue that the occupancy restrictions have done a good job of, of helping housing prices stagnate or decline, you know? It's like, it's, that's an absurd argument and so.
Hasn't worked in the past 30 years that we've had them, so.
I'm not super hopeful that, that, you know, housing is somehow going to be much more affordable because of bedrooms are for people. But I'm, I really think it's an important step, step to take anyways for a wide variety of reasons.
Right. Yeah, and even if, yeah, it just gives people more flexibility. I mean, that's a big part of it, right? Is if you have a lot of people who are sort of on the edge, right? And having those occupancy limits really restricts their ability to use their own networks to help them find solutions.
Or, I mean, to like, if you own a house and you're having troubles making those ends meet.
Right.
You know, now you'll be able to sign a contract that, to rent out that room that's legit and that, and both parties can feel good about it and not feel like they're living on the edge, right?
Right, so, so it's like, I think it, it just does so much for people who really, you know, deserve a little bit of a break. And for that reason alone, I think that it's definitely worth doing.
Yeah, well, thank you for supporting that. Do you, do you have any other final thoughts, parting shots?
Before it starts pouring rain on us.
Before it starts pouring rain or before the sun.
We did get a nice, like.
Yeah, I felt like at some point, I should have just turned the camera around and shown like how beautiful it was. It was such a nice evening. Anyways, thank you for taking time to sit and visit with me and tell us about, you know, who you are and what you, what you value. I felt like I learned a lot.
Thanks, I really appreciate that you're doing this, all the conversations you're having in our community. I love like getting to hear all the different people that are doing really cool things. It's, yeah, and it just, I think it is shaping the dialogue of sort of what, what is acceptable and where, what we might do to sort of tackle these issues. And I think that's really important.
Cool, cool. Well, I'm, it's, it's been really a pleasure interviewing you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by David Adamson and Philip Ogrin. Sound and video editing was done by Philip Ogrin. The intro music was sampled from "Oslidum" by Gilberto Gil and is available for use under the Creative Commons Sampling Plus license. Please visit us at sharingboulder.us for show notes and previous episodes. If you enjoyed this podcast, please support us by sharing this episode with your friends and family. Keep sharing, Boulder.